We will call this work session to order. Ms. Franky Porter.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges.
Bro.
Mr. Garber.
Yeah.
Mr. Moran.
Yeah.
Chairman.
Here. If you have an adoption of the meeting agenda, we do have an amended agenda in front of us. Gentlemen, there's no other changes on the agenda without the amended agenda.
Motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Thank you. Second, the name is good. Frank.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman.
All right, first up is presentation. We have the RAP resilience adaptation feasibility tool. We have Ms. Andrews and Ms. Gladfelter. All those are just one.
I have one coming in virtually. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Elizabeth Andrews with the William and Mary Law School Virginia Coast to Policy Center. And Ms. Gladfelter was going to be with me this evening. She's my colleague from the University of Virginia. By the way, should I take up the mask?
You can't, we're presenting.
Thank you. But her husband just got a job in Taiwan. And so she's on the flight right now. So it's really priorities, but it is. So instead, I have Dr. Lee Yusup with me at Central Division University because this project is a partnership between the three universities. So I don't know if she's online. Thank you. Can you tell that has she been on the media?
She is there after the phone calls.
How about if I go ahead and start in the meantime? So as you can see from the cover slide, and thank you for putting this on your table. Appreciate that. It is a partnership between the three universities. As I mentioned, the Old Dominion University Institute for Coastal Adaptation and Resilience, the UVA Institute for Engagement and Negotiation, and then the Virginia Coast to Policy Center, which I drew.
More clicker shots? We'll sort of just click right on that.
She's going to show off the first part. All right, so the RAP stands for, which we love our acronym, is the Resilience Adaptation Feasibility Tool. I will not quiz you later on that. It's hard to remember. But the goal of the RAP is to help Virginia's coastal localities improve resilience to flooding and other coastal storm hazards while striving to thrive both economically and socially. So that's an important point that it's really a dual goal. To become more resilient, but also economically thriving and socially thriving at the same time. So the values of the RAP are the communities and the driver's seat. It's a three-stage process, and I'll go through that in a moment. But it's driven by the community. Particularly because we partnered with the planning district commission in Virginia. We did the RAP project on the eastern shore of Virginia. And then we did Northern Neck, and now we're coming to the middle peninsula. And in each case, we partnered with the planning district commission first. So that's a key part of it. And as part of the three steps of the program of it, the community comes together and it decides on the strategies it wants to pursue. It decides on the projects to become more resilient. So community-driven. And we adapt our support to each locality's needs. I'm going to give you some examples in this presentation. And it's at no cost to the community. This is a grant-funded effort, so the universities come to you and do this without cost. So how is it funded? The Jesse Baldupon Fund, which I'm sure you all have probably heard of, funded efforts in the Northern Neck and now in the peninsula for Virginia Environmental Endowment, which came out of the terrible heatblot spill on the James years ago. The Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities Coastal Zone Management Program. And then general staff funding C-grant and from UVA and the Commonwealth Center for Recurrent Flooding Resiliency, which is a partnership created by legislation. And that's between Old Dominion University, VIV, Virginia Student Research, and my center. The RAP team is multi-university and multidisciplinary. Our partnership is, as I said, those three institutions. But we bring to the table other cross-university talents that we can. For example, the Green Infrastructure Center at UVA has helped us out with doing some green infrastructure plans for some towns on the eastern shore and in Northern Neck. Engineering assistance can be provided through ODU. So in planning and community outreach facilitation through the University of Virginia, of course, law and policy analysis from the law school. So we started in 2015. We had students research other scorecards that were out there and realized that many times scorecards in all different kinds of settings, they're done and then they sit on the shelf. And we realized that process was not sufficient. So we developed it into the three stages I would go through in a moment. We had an advisory committee of local governments, state governments, nonprofits, academics that helped us develop the process and scorecard. And then we tested it in three pilot counties. Gloucester County, the middle peninsula, town of King Charles on the eastern shore, city of Portsmouth in the upper road. So we're trying to get both geographic diversity and municipality-type diversity. And then the eastern shore of Virginia and seven localities, A-look, how is the Northern Neck, six in the middle peninsula, since Gloucester's already got the process. So increased flooding, what is at risk? Land inundation, shoreline erosion, destruction of wetlands, saltwater intrusion into wells, increased threat of severe storms. These are things that I'm sure you all are familiar with. Higher property insurance rates would be unpleasant results of that. And transportation and infrastructure risk, including septic systems as the flooding increases and groundwater level rises. And then, of course, economic stability. So it's very important to address resilience. So right now, you may have heard that the Commonwealth has been undertaking a coastal resilience master plan. I serve on the technical advisory committee for that. And the Old Dominion ICAR folks did the mapping for that through the Commonwealth Center for Recurrent Flooding Resiliency. So I'm going to ask Dr. Yusup if she would like to address the mapping. We noted on this slide the complex flooding, the reasons for it, right? We have groundwater extraction, which is resulting in land subsidence in some areas. That's one of the things driving us being one of the hardest hit in ceiling rise on the east coast. Rising tides, increased precipitation, storm surge, surface runoff, all contribute to flooding. So can Dr. Yusup hear me?
I can hear you, Elizabeth.
Great. Would you like to talk about the map? Do you see it?
Sure, I can see the map. Very briefly, I just wanted to give a little bit of background. This map was created for the Commonwealth Center for Recurrent Flooding Resiliency in support of the coastal resilience master plan. And one of the advantages is that it allows for a statewide comparison with data that's uniform across coastal Virginia. But more importantly, it has projections for the structure or the infrastructure that are impacted by flooding in different timeframe. So it allows you to see, for example, with King William County, what types of infrastructure and structures and the extent to which they would be affected by flooding in the period of by 2040, by 2060, and also by 2080. So here on this map, we just took an extract of the map created by the Commonwealth Center for Recurrent Flooding Resiliency mappers and just wanted to kind of give you a quick overlay to better understand where you can see the infrastructure with different colors are indicating different levels of vulnerability of the infrastructure. And so you see where you might have infrastructure in the left-hand side of the map. Some infrastructure that are being impacted by flooding projected for 2080, but also where you could see potentially loss of agricultural land due to inundation and flooding. So the beauty of this map is that it allows you to zoom in much more specifically, but also with different planning horizons to allow you to think about impacts in 2040, 2060, and 2080. And Elizabeth, back to you.
Thank you, Lee. So if you wanted to see the 2014, the 2016 maps we're having to share this week, we just didn't want to take up too much of your time this evening. So we selected the 2018. All right, so the concept of resilience, people have different definitions of resilience. One of the important things we wanted to point out is that community resilience really comes from economic resilience. We were just talking about social resilience and environmental resilience, all three. And it is an iterative process. There's a resilience cycle. You start out assessing your risks and your vulnerabilities. You plan, you prioritize, you implement projects. As you recover, you monitor, evaluate the results, and then you go back in and assess again. So it's a constant iterative process to improve your resilience. The RAP process is three steps. The first one is an assessment, the RAP resilience scorecard. We work with the locality staff to assess the various programs and policies. I want to say thank you to Ms. Frank, she was able to help us. And then, and we are also doing some interviews and focus groups to try to increase participation in the process. Then the setting of priorities, again, is community-driven. We have a resilience action workshop. It will be in January to kick off the year in the middle peninsula. It's a regional workshop. We invite representatives of all the different localities to come. They split out into groups by locality, and they come up with their one-year resilience action checklist. What are the three to five projects they want to work on to become more resilient for the coming year? And then these locality, we call it implementation teams, will meet monthly, be facilitated, reschedule them, and over Zoom and or phone call, so we can do Zoom. And we go through the checklist items, and we help move through those items. We bring to those implementation teams state agency representatives as necessary. So for example, if there's a septic issue that needs to be addressed, we bring a representative of BTH, the Department of Health. Forestry has attended in the past. There are questions about tree plants, et cetera. DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, has a shoreline erosion and stabilization service, DRCs. Aaron Went when that has attended. So we bring in state agency representatives to help as we can. On the eastern shore, for example, we brought in VDOT representatives to meet the towns out there so that they could talk about their flooding risks. And then the third stage is implementation for the year. After these implementation teams are formed, they need per year, we facilitate the need, it's ongoing support and assistance. So these are the five categories in the scorecard. And the PowerPoint that I sent, the video link is live. I won't take your time now, but you can watch the video if you'd like to learn more about that. For the five categories are policy, leadership, and collaboration, risk assessment and emergency management, infrastructure resilience, planning resilience, and community engagement, health, and well-being. So King William County, you all did really well. So you should be proud, actually. This is how you scored on each of the categories. The lowest, which is a common theme among localities when we assess them, is the community engagement, health, and well-being. That's one of the harder ones to get to. The total is 57. And as a teacher, I have to hasten to say, this is not a failing score because everyone wants to have the curve. But low resilience is a score of less than 50, where you have plenty of opportunities to improve still. A moderate resilience score is actually 50 to 74. It shows that you're actively involved in coastal resilience planning. You've achieved some success in it, and there's still some opportunities to strengthen your resilience. And then high resilience is 375 or more. So you all did well. Here's your regional comparison to show you. You actually are the regional leader. So you can rub it in with your colleagues, isn't that? And then comparison by section. And you can see you're the lighter green color, which you did particularly well in your risk assessment and emergency management, for example, planning for resilience. And so here are your top strengths under risk assessment, emergency management, active hazard mitigation plan, resident emergency preparedness plan and outreach, planning for resilience. You have development standards, open space and land suitability ordinances, community engagement, health, and well-being. You have emergency operations plan that provides for food, health, care, and medicine. Top opportunities for improvement under locality leadership policy and collaboration. For example, you could hold resiliency training for officials and community leaders. You could collaborate on resilience planning with stakeholders who will lead the emergency response and provide the public with opportunities to get input on it. Participate in regional resilience-oriented committees and initiatives. Incorporate new data analysis and approaches to resilience in your floodplain management zoning and subdivision ordinances and research and participate in the community rating system program, which is through the National Flood Insurance Program. It's an opportunity for localities to take some steps beyond the basic requirements and then get lower flood insurance rates for their residents. Another opportunity under risk assessment and emergency management. You could identify additional potential vulnerabilities related to cultural, historic, and economic assets. Work with your vulnerable populations to increase their emergency preparedness. Invite your chamber of Congress to send representatives to various kinds of meetings, provide programs for small business emergency preparation. That's often a very popular one to help small businesses that don't have as many resources become well-prepared and engage residents in emergency drills and disaster simulations. Under infrastructure, providing incentives for private property activities to manage storm owners. Providing demonstrational best management practices and signage on fellow property for stormwater education. Develop a plan to protect critical transportation infrastructure, update the water supply plan, all kinds of different opportunities that you can pursue. And green strategies such as living shorelines and weather storm restoration. Under planning for resilience, conduct an assessment of the economic impacts of coastal storm hazards. Identify funding for projects that are not in your capital improvement plan, that are resilience projects. Use community input around coastal resilience to inform your comprehensive plan. Incorporate setbacks into land use regulations to protect the floodfront areas and educate the community about their natural resources. So community engagement, health, and well-being, the final category, create a coastal resilience committee. Assign staff roles, hold at least one public meeting per year, including one in vulnerable resident areas to address coastal resilience. Create informational materials to disseminate, hold community training sessions, and partner with non-governmental organizations, NGOs, and others to identify the needs of vulnerable populations, trust and message to them, and gather data, discipline, and to involve the population. So the community workshop, as I mentioned, is going to be in January. The participants will develop up to five priority one-year resilience actions for their initial localities checklist. And the actions can be drawn from the scorecard, those opportunities that we just highlighted from these interviews and focus group findings. And it could include creating an ongoing community stakeholder resilience committee, identifying the different assets that are vulnerable. Small business, again, I mentioned earlier, it's a very popular one to help them with emergency preparedness with critical transportation and structural vulnerabilities. The monthly support calls facilitated by the RAP team with the localities implementation team members. And then we provide, this is examples of items that we have developed before. Communication products, policy and legal analysis, could be model ordinances, comprehensive plan language. We were assisting, for example, the town of Colonial Beach in the Northern Neck to incorporate resilience into the comprehensive plan. We even did a workshop last April that's online, it's on the RAP workshop, RAP site if you'd like to check it out, about having incorporate resilience into the comprehensive plan. GIS mapping, asset mapping, connection to experts like the state agency representatives, engineers, planners, and then facilitation and community outreach. From the eastern shore, this is an example. They had an issue, they had a lot of rental properties, and they never knew when someone was there, when a terrible storm was coming. And so they didn't know how to reach them. They said, we put a flyer in the mailbox, it could sit there for weeks in the rain and the wind blow it away. So we developed magnets for refrigerators that were distributed so that no matter what renter is there or what owner is there, they have the emergency numbers, the evacuation zone, et cetera. So our ask of you all is that we're committing to work with you all for the coming year. But we would love to have your representation at the January workshop, to have a board liaison appointed to the implementation team, and to get suggestions from you for key groups, citizens, community leaders, to be invited to the workshop and serve in the implementation. Because you all know your communities the best. And this is the context that you have written emails. Any questions?
I guess just one, and I'm guessing because of the threat level of West Point was specific in its own category.
Yes, the town of West Point, we're doing that separately. That was just suggested as a separate government. But often the town cooperates with the surrounding county, we've had a rich town in this, right? We have strong contacts for things. So I imagine there'll be a lot of cross-pollination between the two.
You mentioned if the score is lower, that it would help the residents for lower flood insurance rates?
For the community ratings.
What type of improvement, just estimate, if we had 57 now, what type of overall improvement would we be looking at to achieve a lower flood insurance rate?
So that's a different kind of score. It's something called the CRS for short, it's the Community Rating System. It's part of the National Flood Insurance Program through FEMA. And so if you engage in activities like setting aside open areas, for example, in coastal areas that are subject to flooding, it could be buffers. That's a good example. Educating citizens, et cetera. There are things that you can do to increase your community rating system score. And that improved score reduces the flood insurance rates. There's actually a nonprofit group called Wetman's Watch that has a community rating system work group where they invite local government representatives and they try to help them to learn the changes in the flood insurance program, which happen periodically, like right now, a lot of changes. So I'd be happy to connect you with them if you'd like to talk to them, and they'll come and host a meeting if you like.
Thank you. Yeah, Gloucester has done a lot of work on their CRS. Because I think the score, oh man, it's been a while. I'm on a PDC, so Louis has given us a deep breadth of attention.
That's right.
But yes, it is. It's not something we pay a lot of attention to at the King William level here to the fore, but certainly something we can look into as the flooding risk increases ever and ever more as you move outside of West Point and further out.
That could be one of the items, for example, on your implementation checklist to look into the CRS program and see about improving during the score. Again, we do work hand-in-hand with the middle peninsula BBC.
I've heard your name many, many times. It's good to put a base.
Hopefully not curses, et cetera. But Louis.
A few people losing.
Louis Kurt didn't be here this evening, but they have this fantastic fight the flood program they've started. And so what we're hoping is that some of the projects that are developed through this can feed into that. So we're kind of working here.
Ms. Franklin, Ms. Morgan. I see wheels turning over.
I ask this of everyone doing this sort of work. Point that you give up and say, we can't beat this, let's relocate folks and spend their money elsewhere. You showed a map of the farm and that's up there.
Is that where it was later, the flood that lasted here?
That's a historical flood.
But in 50 years, it's going to be over. You get nice fishing on.
You know, I think if we don't plan and prepare, then when that water does rise and get to that point, what you don't want is to have everybody go, oh, no. How did this happen? Why didn't you tell me, right? So the more that you plan and have the tools, the more.
I totally appreciate that aspect, but spending for what you call, I'm thinking of Netherlands and New Orleans and that radical work and cost to save someone's beach home. At some point, just relocate.
Good luck with New Orleans. That's built below sea level.
And a lot of times, this seems like New Orleans, they enact with stormwater infrastructure because they built the stormwater infrastructure for yesterday's storms, not the increasing waters.
So maybe the bigger point is here, we have an opportunity, whereas they're already with very few options to improve what they have there. So to the extent that we can, as governmental entities, as educational institutions with technical expertise to help those governmental entities lay groundwork to, again, mitigate and be resilient to these types of floods that are, again, are only going to get worse regardless of what we do here, that we don't have to face that situation that they're facing and probably should have acknowledged, well, should have acknowledged flooding, you know, risk probably 50 years ago. Certainly the idea that there is going to be an affair.
Well, they have the land needs to be eaten with their false.
Right. But yeah.
Many times for years it went without flooding, I think, is why we can't do a whole lot. Now, is raising the houses the answer, part of the answer? And then doing the, I don't even know what you call them, the flozer root for the foundation?
The floodments?
Yeah.
So raising up houses can be a, I would call it a temporary solution. And here's why. In a rural area, you still have a septic system. So your septic system is in there. And whether in a rural area or an urbanized area, raising of the house does not fix the flooding of the access room and the driveway. And so we did a study a few years ago, presented at the middle peninsula PDC meeting, actually, where we took an area of Gloucester as an example and tried to create a model estimating where people might abandon ship and retreat on their own. And it was triggered usually by the road flooding X number of times. Because that's what's going to drive people, actually, for the house flooding as much as that road flooding that they have to deal with and then they're going to try to sell a lot of time. So elevating a home can be a temporary fix, but if you're trying to do it with grand dollars, it takes a long time and costs a lot of money, and it doesn't, it's not an ultimate fix.
I just, for the life of me, I was at Isabel in West Point. And I stood in water on 14th Street, almost to my waist. I don't know what you're going to do if that tide hits right, the wind is right, and that storm comes in wrong, I guess. Anyway, we want. Exactly.
That was Isabel, I remember that. No, that's exactly right. And that's why on that one slide showing the different areas, some of the causes of flooding, it's not just the localized, right? Hurricane Matthew never made shore in Virginia, never hit ground. It was off the coast, completely flooded areas of Virginia Beach because they had a neighborhood that had 1980s-era stormwater infrastructure that was overwhelmed. And they had to drop the storm come through it before. So it was already full of water, right? So yes, I mean, it depends on where the water.
It causes you to lose trees, didn't like the highway with all the water.
And so that's the resilience.
Right. I think ahead, we're trying to figure it out. So if you all are willing to appoint a liaison to come to the workshop in January, that would be terrific. And then also if they would be willing to serve on a implementation team, that would be fantastic, too. Even if you can't come, you know, every month, we can keep a loop. They could phone in, go for a meeting, whatever.
Just details, I need more time. Location.
It's going, well, we haven't actually looked the location yet in January because we have all of our things crossed to have a person. We're kind of waiting to see what the pandemic puts happening. But for example, on East Shore, we held it to in college. In the Northern Neck, we're going to hold it at the big community library in Killarney and then pandemic. So we'll try to find a public site like that to do it, if the pandemic rises. If you all have a suggestion of where you'd like to see it held, we'd love to hear it so that that's a helpful.
Great, I think we have, we'll. Well, thanks, I'm going to take the time to go down.
No, thank you.
This for, you know, me and Ed, we hear about this all the time. But it's good to see some of the stuff that is being worked on at the regional level by a lot of accountable people.
Thank you, we're looking forward to working with you.
Thanks. All right, up next is the VIPSA community partner information. So this is a PowerPoint that's put together, recorded, a pretty brief presentation, but just overview of all services that they do provide, can provide, and just keep your thoughts going on. Get ready to another contract.
It's the Virginia Peninsula's public. The vice of authority, doing more good for our communities together. Why can't our member cities and counties, our customers, the citizens of these localities have different needs at different times? Every day, a household generates solid waste materials, like food waste and packaging. These items can be handled by the VIPSA Trash and Recyclant Services. Sometimes, to maintain our homes, we need to use other products like paint and chemicals. The leftover materials require special handling under national and state laws and regulations. These items can be brought to a VIPSA household chemical event. Through the year, we work through bigger to-do lists like yard and garden care or home improvement projects. When we improve or maintain our homes. When we improve or maintain our outdoor spaces, we need quality compost and mulch. We also need a way to dispose of the yard debris we generate. At the compost facility, high-quality mulch and rich composted soil, all made locally using the organic debris generator in the region. Can be purchased. Also debris can be dropped off at the compost facility. Bigger home projects such as remodeling or cleaning out the garage generate residential waste and recycling. These items can be brought to a VIPSa collection facility. In our region, we frequently are bombarded by nature, hurricanes and storms generating high wind and rain. Such as the tornado that went through Tappahannock in two thousand sixteen. With VIPSa pre-positioned contracts for debris removal and monitoring services, member of communities can activate their contract when needed. In the event of snow and ice, VIPSa staff check on roads and when necessary, clear sites to ensure safety. Our citizens don't need all of these services all of the time, but they need them to be available when they do. The same is true for our member cities and counties. They have found that the most cost-effective way to bring quality, on-demand, essential services to the citizens who have entrusted them to serve. Is by coming together. Each member city and county helps guide and direct VIPSa. Members choose what they need for their citizens, which services and in what form. Minimizing costs, maximizing benefits, being good stewards of their limited funds. We consider ourselves to be an extension of each community we serve. Another service within your public works department. VIPSa of the members, by the members, for the members, evolving to meet the ever-changing needs of our communities.
You have any thoughts or questions for VIPSa that I can relate to them or concerns, uh, they need to do with. Getting up again with them as opposed to looking outside. So I think, uh, speaking over Ed as well as myself, probably, uh, some years ago. A budget decision was made to cut hours at the landfill site and at the airport site. Um, as we move into budget season, I think I would be interested and perhaps others might be as well to see what. Adding those hours back in to what they historically had been, what kind of impact that would have on our allocation. Um, we've discussed in the past the feasibility of pick-up services, the feasibility of that, I suppose, but. Um, while that might be something we desire, it probably is not something that's practical at this time. Um, as far as do we re-up or not re-up, that's, uh, I'm unaware unless somebody is aware, they could. Very well, maybe, so, uh, of another viable option really that has the economy of scale that VIPSa offers. There just isn't really anyone else playing in this field at the scale in the area. There's some other private companies, but they don't have scalability of VIPSa.
So was that, I I imagine it was, was it a four-year contract?
It's ten, yeah.
So was that, uh, I guess it was open to bidding, was it? Did we open a bidding process and there were only, only ones or?
Ten, I was elected ten years ago, so. So you don't know. So that was done right before.
Your problem, right? There's probably nobody else. I think that if we don't do that, we would be at the mercy for whatever they may want to charge us for.
Well, we're at their mercy, but we're also part of their board of directors. Um, and so all the communities have to agree on pricing, price raises, staffing, things like that.
I'd like to see, uh, some of the comments that the gentleman made, that number's made now. We talked about. Uh, getting a tire bid at Airport. It it seems to, to me, it seems like Airport has improved somewhat. They're not as full as they have in the past.
Yeah, but you you can go there at the long time.
Sure.
On afterthought, it's it's a bad location. Oh, you know, once it does get back, um, it's a, it's a, it's a windy area there. I'm surprised they have not had accidents there in the past, but, uh. Yeah, you know, in any of them, you get docked up on the, or transferring to dumpster. But I think it would though.
I think an additional, an additional day, so the tire bin would be very helpful.
We'll cut it down, we'll cut the traffic down.
Especially since central garages, so.
Right, right. Well, I think Airport has a lot of pressure put on it from the central garage side, so. Yeah, if we could expand the hours there.
And tires are an issue? Well, I I'm asking because you can, if you cut them in half, you can do twelve a year, no matter who's doing more.
There was no limit. That seems to be a self-imposed. Mike had said that that was not a limit as to how many tires you can put.
She's telling me.
They told me twelve.
Me too.
But you gotta cut them across, but.
She didn't tell me how to cut mine in half. She said I could make twelve full tires to the one up at near. I jumped.
Running to in different locations is different.
The rule is if the tires are being sent to landfill, they have to be cut in half so they don't flip. All right. Um, if the tire are being sent for recycling, they do not have to be cut. Um, you know, my tire stock goes to recycle, so I don't have to worry about that. I don't know how VIPSa has historically handled their tires if they send them to recycling. I would hope they do. Same time, the cost, now, right now, it's costing me three to ten dollars per tire to send them to recycle.
I'll have a, a slave thing and go, I don't have to cut them half.
You wanted a table.
I'm one of those people. No, they, they, they have never, they have a question.
If we could ask the question, it's certainly based on the, an extra day.
And the only other thing I can think of is the chemical, when they're doing these events. Sometime I don't, we don't hear about them until.
Yes, I'm not surprised. Just looking at dumpster when you go to throw the tires and they are, I don't see any cutting.
But we're doing, just running around the backyard honestly.
You will have to tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, we take mine out, it'll cost three dollars.
Yeah, but just like. Yes, you will, you will.
It will only have hundred sixty-five dollars.
I agree with you, like, mainly, I was like, I'd also like to bring up something about central garage. I mean, we talked about it, then we have land, we can't use land, we can find some more land.
Right, that's.
That really is a problem. Cause like, you can't, all people don't see is, I've seen many near misses, people slamming into people.
Right, that part's on us.
Okay, well, I see, maybe we could push in something for ourselves to find the site and operate it.
Remember, we're not digging down. What was wrong with the, the location? I remember that it had items under.
Right, we couldn't, it wasn't heavy to hold weight.
Right, I agree, yes.
And it trashed, and it trashed, probably.
Yeah.
That's it, it's just trash.
There was, there was a, there was a plan that, uh, developed, developed for what could be done on that site, which was. Adding one dumpster or a drop-off with a very long lane to accommodate traffic. But it wouldn't end, but so much to it, and it would have cost a lot to do that.
That, oh, that side is something like ten acres.
It is, but most of it is either creek or landfill or old trash. About six inches of dirt. A lot of tall, I think. Somebody did, and I went a whole other. So.
The only two, it closes the years of network.
Yeah, well, it would be a W if you closed landfill. You should not be in.
That's right.
All right.
Just one more. Central garage gets closed every Tuesday.
They're all closed.
That's one of how I was getting it, yes. So it's nowhere to really go?
Airport is on them too. But their hours are. I think they close at five.
Yeah, I think it slips. I might be wrong.
We can find all of it. I know B W is seven thirty to five thirty.
Yeah.
Close Tuesday. Um, cause that's the one I guess. I'm good. Um, okay, so those comments, and then I think maybe just internally, again, a desire to find something to do with central garage. And we all know about it, it's a ton of crap. And we also were pushing trying, you know, with this curbside, this, this can. Curbside in hopes that it would alleviate some of the central garage pressure of housing up there. But this, uh, just to reiterate, uh, is unable to just do curbside just for that area, it would have to be for the county, and that would be cost.
I don't get that part.
We can't offer a service just for that area, it's a public service and not operate to every citizen. But, well, I mean, that's put up there, so it's, that while true, that's inside the box. Outside the box would be, you do have the ability to create special taxing features. But that's a whole can of worms, but it is, it is a fact. Cause that's effectively what the schools are, remember? And yes, that's okay, but, um. So, a- and I know that there are some localities that do it that way with different levels of public service. I mean, if you go to Fairbanks, they've got twenty different levels. For different services, they provide in different areas. Not saying that's the solution here, but it is an option. But, uh, the idea that they gave us was to approach the HOAs and give them the idea of approaching. And I know that they've had approached a couple of other, uh, trash services, private trash services, to see what they would do with those localities. I can follow up, see if HOAs ever talk with them.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, next up, we have a public hearing. Uh, the public hearing is gonna be on resolution twenty-one dash eighty-one, it's gonna be twenty-one dash eighty-one. Uh, R, we do have a small revision that needs to be made to the resolution that merely states that we are holding a duly advertised public hearing. Um, Mr. Grant, what lines that need to be on?
It would come between eighteen and nineteen.
Okay, and the wording begins?
We're as the board supervisors, how do we have to have public hearing on November eighth, twenty twenty-one to receive public comment?
Okay, so we need to add the line there that says that the board, how do we duly advertise public hearing to receive public comment on today's day. Only change. Just something to change, just want to language clarify. Anybody have any questions about it? Okay, if not, then I will open, uh, a public hearing on resolution twenty-one dash eighty-one R. You think now? Anybody in the room? We will be coming up, three minutes per individual, five minutes per a group, representing group. It states that before you begin speaking, we state the name, your name, and district in which you reside before you begin speaking. Uh, anybody online who would just comment, please use the raise hand feature and you will be recognized to speak. We'll go ahead and do a one-minute countdown for anybody online who wishes to speak so that they can get recognized. Anybody in the room again? All right, and so, we have anybody online?
No.
All right, we'll close the public here. Now, Mr. Graham pointed out in my, uh, dwelling of the, the, of them into the line. I feel the call was Graham up to talk about what we're actually, uh, gonna be voting on here. So, Mr. Grant, if you could, uh.
Okay, on the proposed order on town site, we talked about it at our last meeting. Um, it was brought up that you would like to see pictures of the location, so I did do a PowerPoint with a few pictures. Okay, this is on one of our GIS maps that shows the location. However, the, the location of the tower is gonna be toward three sixty. Okay? And I just made it a little bit smaller to try to put it into context where it was related to the, um, streets and so forth. Um, and this is, um, across three sixty, looking at the property. And this is just kind of a proposed location with showing, um, the tower that is put there. Um, and this is showing waterline extension. Um, that's just kind of looking down three sixty so you can get an idea of what's located in that vicinity. Putting this at this location, we are able to loop it instead of dead in it, and in the line, which is better for the system.
Repeat it.
We're able to, we can loop it versus dead in the line. And that would be get much better for the system, because there's better water quality.
Mr. Grant, we have an estimate on the, is the landowner willing to donate this like last time, or is this a costly reverse?
An opportunity.
Mr. Grant, do we have, uh, I'm thinking of antennas and whatnot on top, do we impose those requirements when we go out for an RFP? Or can we just get the, the latest and greatest in water towers? And we say we want a platform that we put that.
You can certainly say that. Um, I think that is always beneficial.
I mean, we're.
One way, a little bit like that. And personally, we're pricing it out as a speedway town, it would be similar to same type as what's at such garage right now. Um, pricing right now is metal is way up. So it is possibly more cost-effective to do a combination concrete steel tower. Which was looking a little bit different, but, um, either way, I think we can actually put some sort of platform up there to get antennas.
I'm thinking way out there, some sort of graphic to show off King William. Uh, that'll be a great one there.
That was discussed.
We're gonna start a video contest. For graphic design.
And we have to put some type of platform up there mainly for lighting and. And for lighting rods.
With lighting, uh, lighting rod, not much lighting, but light rod, and uh, there's always gonna be communication antennas up there for HRSD and the SAGA system to connect with all the rest of water system.
There is no materiality thing make it out of, it's not metal.
Concrete used to make it out of wood, but not. Most of them.
Bound glass, no.
I'm something that did, yeah. It's just more of what, how much of, of the rest of the towers, what's that being supported by, it's all steel. Concrete, it just depends on tier of price at the time. Which is more effective.
It's fun, you go recycle metal and the price ain't up.
Any other point? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
This chair, I got a question. We'll get quite to that, and maybe it's just my inexperience, but why is this thing staying done at this point of the October?
Steven, you missed.
I did. I sure did, and I just wrote it on top of it.
Oops. I didn't think it was ripe, but I, I wasn't, I thought maybe I missed something.
Good thing it's R, because it has to change.
That's right. Often does that make it all one?
Think we talked about it.
Okay, well, that changed, not with standard.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention that we through resolution twenty one dash eighty one dash R with the two changes heading forward, help public hearing on Saturday today. And changing the to November the eighth, twenty twenty one.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Grant.
Mr. Harper?
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Chairman Salston?
Hi. Okay, on to number six, fireney mess department page. She green.
Some news with the COVID. Virus, uh, infection rate seem to be going down a little. And uh, the, as you're still there, so we, we've been suffering in the firehouse specifically in the quarantine due to exposures and so forth. So still, knock on wood, internally, our protocols and standards are keeping us safe inside. However, the risk is still there, and um, I can't stress enough how important it is just get vaccinated, isolated if you can, and try to keep yourself clear. Uh, flu season's upon us, flu vaccines are out and ready, so please get your flu vaccine. We are continuously going to satisfy the, the region for a DMSO, which is where we transport most of our patients, which means we have to call a hotline. They tell us where to pick our patients, which can tremendously extend the transport time, footload staffing, so on so forth. Yeah, so we have had a call on our neighbors multiple times this past month, King and Queen. We've had it at Swiss Point come up in the upper part of the county several times. I know they are part of us, but the last choice should be to extend that resource because it leaves the entire town of West Point open. Uh, northern end of the county.
And why are we in, why do we have to do this?
Code black?
Yeah.
That is determined by the DMSO uh, region, and it's due to the saturation of the hospitals based on patient beds and availability of staff.
That's what my question was, will we was it stable?
Yeah, well, hospitals are suffering probably worse than we are right now. Um, you know, we, we, as a region, the fireney mess agency does suffer tremendously from outages and isolation and just normal sickness, run-of-the-mill stuff. But um, across the board of probably the emergency services and the emergency hospital departments, we're exhausted. There, you know, the people who were healthy, who were able to come to work, they're getting beat up, and they're just kind of failing to be able to thrive in that environment. So unfortunately, people seem to be pulling away, um, looking for better opportunities in a safer environment, so on so forth. So that's what's driving the code life right now. It's not that the COVID patients are at their peak, it's at the peak of COVID patients and all the other issues that we have across the board are wearing everybody. It, it's coming down the staff.
Chief, just another point on that particular thing, do we have to backlog to help other counties? Or we ask to come like help King and Queen to help them if they need something, and we go help them, so it's both ways.
Yes.
And New Kent does have a mutual agreement with West Point.
Yeah, verified that today, uh, we were looking into some of those uh, things. I'm trying to get up my hands on the document, but most mutual agreements are tit for tat. I can help you if I can, you can help me if you can, we don't hurt each other. So I think that we'll be working on those in the near future, make everything legit. But um, as far as I'm aware, West Point has gone through their um, organization with New Kent, King William County does not, that's correct. Um, so that allows them to have mutual aid back and forth with those guys. And we do EMS through the DERA agreement, through the multiple, multiple agencies involved with their agreement. Um, so you don't have a specific King William County and King and Queen with a DERA arrangement. However, it is in the best interest of all counties to have their own mutual aid, which would be very exchange. So we're gonna be working on that in the future. However, um, answer your question, yes, they do ask us, we did go if they ask, if we can, but you know, we have to wait our, you know, if we have one EMS left, and they're asking for a transport, if somebody's coming, feels bad, we're probably not gonna go. However, if they have a life threatening issue, regardless of our resources, we want to try that, uh, person, so, right? And this, unfortunately, because the resources are so limited, usually it's not a, a situation where you can refuse. Uh, and they have, they have graciously come in our county multiple times, and, and we've gone and helped them as many times as we can. Um, I already talked about the mask and, you know, the policies of buildings and trying to keep everybody separated to make sure we're all safe. The offers for the seven physicians, uh, through the art funds have been sent out, most of them have returned. Um, and we will be uh, doing a physical agility test to ensure that the people who are applying, who have received offers, can be trained in the fireside of it before we invest all the money and effort into a, an academy setting to train them. And they will be signing a, an agreement of um, employment, ensuring that, you know, if you leave, you got reimbursed accounting for the training.
Repeat that again.
They're gonna be signing an, an array, an agreement stating that if they leave without, you know, on their own will, that they would be reimbursed as accounting for the training that they receive.
We're gonna push that, and many, you know, many localities never push that envelope after they do it.
Uh, but we're. We're gonna look at it before we decide what we're gonna do with it, but that can be weighed by the county, I'm sure myself. Or if you push that, however, multiple of gourous around the region are going to that even as far west as we're at. People are putting too much money into these folks to take them from a high school diploma to a college level performance um, job. And having people walk away just because they saw another dollar or something.
Right.
Uh, York, uh, the beach area, they, that area, they've been doing that for many, many years. Um, and their, their, their contracts are married extreme. And especially like guys like two and a half years in, and for him to walk away, he has to come out and pay me two thousand dollars in two and a half years. So i- it's just a, a small bit, you know, give me three years, and you know, by then, hopefully, they found their best in the county. And looking at the growth of the department with versus, and when you give you training, oh, now I'm pretty satisfied, I can do a lateral moving, I make five thousand dollars more from here. That's the purpose in the contract.
Well, you know, as roles, I do, the governments are causing a lot of that themselves because they're offering so much to lure.
Yes, absolutely. So, I mean, the, the contract is in defense or not defense, I guess, is probably the wrong word, start out negative foot with it, but it's to help solidify the investment from the prospective employee that they're gonna commit to do what they need to do and skip them.
Aid and retention.
Yes. Trying to stay within the boundaries of conversation, but yes.
Well, it's kind of the flip side of my industry where, you know, we put some money to train them, but if you talk to a lot of technicians, their investment in their own equipment and tools, training, et cetera, is often tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of guys don't want to get into it now because of that, and so you're seeing our end, you go towards allowances for those types of things, or just buying tools straight up. On the flip side of that, a lot of localities have been spending, you know, decades training, training these fellows, you know, spending tens of thousands of dollars on an individual, and often being left with, not able to recruit many of that, they walk away, so that's kind of the flip of that.
No, I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just saying, are we gonna, we're gonna go with that legally in the courts?
Well, we've added our contractors, the lawyers that we have on staff, so um, and they all approved the verage and, and look, and we didn't try to reinvent the wheel. Used to simplest contract that we pull in from some of the old localities that are using that, that's gone through HR first step, and our kind of turn. It, it's, it's really just um, a little bit of insurance policy for, we're basically giving somebody an associate's degree without the associates attached to it. We're putting through a fire programs degree and giving them EMT for free. We just want the um, return on investment for, so, you know, serving their position for one, three years. I had this there, I'm bored.
Yeah.
Okay. We're still working on our standard operating procedures. Uh, we made your word several months ago, a couple, few months ago, about the policies being uh, better and rolled out. Right now, um, the, the operating procedure is a little more complicated because they can change on a whim based on the need of the department or the county itself. And it also includes all of the departments, including the uh, West Point, Midget Dick. Um, and we have to consider, even though they don't have authority to dictate how we do operating procedures, they do need to include uh, more person to make sure that our procedures don't prevent them from being able to operate efficiently. So we're working on that, um, and they're rolling out as quickly as we can in the midst of forty other high priority. Thanks. The transition to ESO is going um, on time, it's not as quick as I had hoped. However, trying to bring three different departments underneath a total umbrella of um, software to cover all the reporting, all their scheduling, everything that they do, and still keeping them all separate, so they're not all of each other's backyard. It's been a little bit trying and a little bit tedious, however, it's mostly just data entry, and we will be rolling these things out as expected on time. Um, and so the county as a whole, including the volunteers, have much better data for uh, reporting or grant running, looking at federal state funding from the outside. And just simply being able to justify what they need when they ask for things, or what they want to turn in if they decide that they help people solve. Our third ambulance is out of service, it went down for um, state inspection, ABS lights on.
A non-expected item.
Uh, what's that?
ABS available, thank you.
Sure, ABS.
Maybe I'm. Red, red, but.
Uh, maybe it's something, I'm sorry, maybe I have an acronym wrong. Whatever it was, it was something that couldn't pass inspection, uh, looking forward, looked at it, and the estimate, we're getting ready to deadline it. Uh, get you guys all pictures of the ambulance.
Right.
That is our ambulance at its uh, state a week and a half ago. So there, it's built, and they're working on the inside, basically. It'll, uh, we're going for final inspection a week at the thirteenth of December, and it'll come, it'll go from Horton to Fusco, with the stripes on it. And then it will be delivered to Henover at the Fusco um, their service center there, and then we'll pick it up and put all our stuff on it, but it's, okay. So hopefully by the end of December, um, this particular ambulance won't be an issue anymore. We can finally put it to pasture, stop talking about wasting money on it. So that third ambulance side, I cannot see where it's um, cost effective to put money into that to turn around, sell it. Uh, so it's gonna come back out of service, we'll say a station one. Just to make sure that nothing goes sideways with the new ambulance, once it's here, we put our hands on it, we'll take that and sell it on, go deals or how the county sees fit to dispose of it. And our second ambulance, which is the next to newest, will be going in for its annual inspection and all that stuff for the actual ambulance part of it, not just the chassis, body, uh, chassis and all that stuff. So that might be out for a roughly a week, uh, so we're gonna be down to one ambulance, one hour station one, starting this week, whenever they bring the other one back. And the only reason why I'm gonna go ahead and let that roll is because we're having an electrical issue with that second ambulance, where the lights are just stopping. And we think that there's something wrong with one of the alarming systems inside of it, when they turn it on, it kills all the lights, they can't run the ambulance up and down the road with the warning clock somewhere. So that's the only reason why we're not gonna hold off on that inspection. So hopefully, we can get that thing turned around in two or three days, and I'll, we'll be reaching out to Megan Hick, um, and West Point to see what we can do to cover the gap. The pre-building engine is on time, I don't have any pictures for you yet. Um, uh, the last update was that the um, cab was in place and waiting for our designation for building, for all the attendants and stuff. So that means the cab already never received, and it's, you know, in the shop waiting to start the process of building the cab. They built the um, chassis at the same time as they put the check, uh, cab together, and in another warehouse, they are building the body at the same time that they're building all these other parts. So that'll, that'll start to change face real quick, it'll be very heavy weight, and then all of a sudden, you'll see a picture of a cab and chassis, or chassis picture of the cab. And then they'll be together, and then you'll see the frame of the body, and you'll see them all sitting on top of each other, within a few weeks after that, you know.
So none of the parts are on the ship.
I don't think so, uh, we're doing really well, we got very lucky, our timing was just in front of the curve, um, all of our apparition we have on order are. We just got lucky, I mean, we're right in front of the curve, we had been a month later ordering the ambulance, uh, even the less um, favorable body and, I'm sorry, cabin chassis. But the ambulances, they're ordering them today for, I think he told me today, the September of twenty twenty two, to even expect to start thinking about getting a cabin chassis for an ambulance. So we, we got really lucky, and, you know, I, I appreciate you guys at Fusco for working with us, they put us on the front line, they hit a hardy word, new chassis, and gets the pick one sixteen. We literally, like, skin of our teeth at that moment, and the engine just rolled in right at the time as well. Uh, but that was just because they do such a volume, um, they, they're, it's a worldwide company, worldwide company provider of engine problem. So they don't have quite as many restrictions, they can always, you know, call Austria and say, hey, I need, you know, some of these plugs. But they're also struggling across the world, but it, you know, it's just that we got nothing. So we're, we're gonna get our stuff on time, and it's all. And the VDM EOP exercise to, to test or to take a look at the county's EOP, well, uh, all that stuff is on, on time for. We have another meeting coming up, and then the December tip, we will, we'll actually have the, the review of the EOP and the, and the exercise to take a look at it, yeah. We are currently working to get the E to C. I guess built out, if you will, but if lack of a better term, so we've. Been able to get our hands on some really nice desk, handing downs from some other localities where they changed the E O P location, sorry, E to C locations. Or upgraded communication centers and they've donated stuff to us and we have a. A small budget coming from our federal brand for Mercy operations that we're going to utilize to help outfit some of that stuff that we don't have on hand. Uh, that'll be in station one and hopefully by the time we do this exercise, we'll have a lot of stuff laid out at least. Uh, we're not going to have all the technology in place since the long term, but for the next couple of years. That's all.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm asking those questions.
Yes, one. Uh, it reminded me, I probably already knew at one point generator.
Yes, there is a narrator. It does run the majority of the stuff when the E to C will be. And I will be asking you guys probably for permission within a year or so to go for maybe one of the few that are asked to. Upgrade that generator to be a full. In the in building generator, if we have that opportunity to come back around. Uh, it's it's critically important and it's proven itself in the past with emergencies. Where those generators make a huge difference when there's no power. Because basically your governing body can't function if they can't get information out and they can't come together. So it's critically important if I was there. So it's a big ticket item for the federal government to fund. And I think that we'll probably have the chance to get a grant to improve that generator.
So COVID visitors and flu shots are out. But I got, they're they're out. I got both on the same day. It can be done. Did not grow a tail, did not die.
And I forgot to say, don't don't forget this, the five to eleven year old. All right. Thank you guys.
Twenty-one dash eighty-two proposed changes to the virtual meeting procedure. Will research before you that this branch put together. This goes to say that. Our options for how to conduct our meetings virtually and have public comments. Are what we've got now, which we have had interruptions and we are not ahead of the curve like also by hacking. We don't have to have a comment virtually. It can be legally just your person. Many localities do it that way. That would be the safest way to do it is to only stream it. People can watch, but if you want to do public comment, come to build. So that's safe as such. Another option, which is better than what we've got, would be to have pre-registration. You can register through Zoom so that they actually do a validation of your email. And we could run our own valid registration beforehand. If you want to make a public comment virtually that night. You would have to alert us, sign up online or call in beforehand, in the week beforehand. Uh, so that as you register to get into the meeting, this branch can also know. That you're registering to speak or that you had ordered registered to speak and that you would be that person. So that doesn't guarantee that we wouldn't be hacked and doesn't guarantee that there would be any shenanigans, but it would be a step above what we've got now.
Right, with spoofing software, that would not stop that, would it?
Not if somebody, exactly. If we're letting people into the meeting that. Like what we had last week.
Right.
But if we're actively unusing somebody that we thought needed to speak, they had registered and we're pretty good chance of that person. Being the right person, whereas right now it's just anybody can do it. But you're right, the spoofing hacking where it's really. Not the person that you're looking at.
Right, anytime you're, anytime you're operating online, there, you're dealing with the possibility that somebody is not who they represent themselves to be. Right. I, I'm inclined to give that a shot though, because I. I don't want them to win because obviously part of the goal in this is to, is to disrupt and to, and to cause. Cause trouble in our meetings, but also discourage people from participating. And. So we certainly don't want to allow, to the extent possible, what we've had alleged. Because that's not, uh, A, fair to our staff. It's not fair to the citizens of Kingview County who were paying us to be up here to do their business. To have to, you know, constantly deal with people who are just acting foolish. And it's not fair to citizens who have to hear those really horrible comments like they may last. But I don't want to let a couple of idiots. Kind of, you know, ruin what had been really up to here with a couple of hiccups, but you know, we've, we've. We've been able to manage this to some extent. So I think maybe putting another level. Another level of management on there. If, if staff thinks that that's not too much of a burden on their time while we're doing these meetings, then I would like to try that. Before we do anything more.
Sorry, I agree, Mr. Chair. It was going to be my next question, be Ben, was how big a stress is that going to be on y'all?
I think it'll be all right because it's really, well, one, are we going to be allowing people to register to comment up to half an hour before the meeting? That might be a little more difficult because we're setting everything up. But within reason. Then it's just a question of they're registering through Zoom and validated that, that's on them. And then when it comes for them to get into the meeting, they'll go through that and then that bows into the waiting room where they get let in just like they are now.
Is, is it possible that Zoom is part of the problem?
Part of it for hacking, but they've also said they, there's just no guarantee that they are going to be one step ahead of hackers either. And we can pay more per month and not get any more security features and then you get up into the really cross cost prohibitive ones that.
Has it come as nicely broken into?
No, no, it's, oh, I know that you were using more go-to, go-to meeting was, is that more secure than you thought?
Now, the only time that I'm aware that we've actually been hacked was.
We had. Plan commission, that wasn't us. That was because Berkeley did.
Right, right. Once we cut out any other share. Right, what I done with the last meeting was attacking.
That was spoofing.
Yeah, well, and I, it was a sheer idiocy is what it was. Spoofing would be if they signed up. You know, and and there's also, there's red flags, obviously, that we, we, well, we wanted to give people the benefit of the doubt, but now we know it's somebody comes up that doesn't know what district it is. Well, we need to properly push the issue a little bit or just pull plug. You know, that was kind of our first warning. And then on the second one, when it started up, we knew, okay, well, this is something somebody's doing, so we should have.
I don't think we'd have stopped that first one. I think you'd ramble and give, we cut him off. I really do. He was going to like keep on.
Well, and those are legitimate people that are logged in. Like I said, we, like, you know, they're supposed to say this because we know one of them who it is. Because like I said, all they have to do is check the IP address. So we know one of them who it is and it's one of the people that we know. So. But still, whether we can go after them or not, that's a different question. And we do that software that was taken from Travis and other Travis that catches that stuff. That's why we haven't had hacked, hacked like Berkeley was that part. These were actual people that have.
Yeah, those are real live people.
Being out of the best of things to some stupid.
Well, at any rate, it's, it's a good thing to do something better. I called, uh, Mrs. Slodow twice and probably asked her. She was sitting right there where Sherry was. She was getting ready to give a presentation and she was physically rambling under a wall. And it's, it's sad that somebody came forward and said something like that. And, oh, thanks, and so that she did a good job. And it certainly doesn't speak for any of us. None of us want to see that kind of thing. So, yeah, it's, it's a good thing.
No, but I do agree that we ought to try it and see if we can cut it down because like the chairman said. We don't want you to win and cut out public comment.
Can you go so far as to require or ask people to identify themselves when they sign in that the names are obvious, not hidden or?
That's what the Zoom set it for. It should, it should be that when they've, it's pretty much the, when they've registered to comment, that's our betting.
What if they already die with, they don't do.
Well, they're going to have to, they're going to need to alert her who it is.
Right.
Sign up beforehand and then before she lets them into the meeting or she'll have to let everybody into the meeting. But before she allows them to speak, she knows with their registration who they are, who that person is.
I just know what happened, Chris Couch and I both, and then last week, Mr. Steve, we thought was a legitimate.
Well, again, red flags at the moment, we're just kind of like lancing his things and we can pay more attention to pointing out the afterwards, that's not the proper spelling of that name. And I, and I, I, I kind of saw it in the moment, but didn't really think anything of it. Um, and so that, you know, there, there's, we can be more vigilant now that we know that this is some of the people in the traffic. Uh, and just try to pick up on those red flags also before that it becomes. So. Is, is there any disagreement that we would try this?
No.
Try to make this work and, and keep.
I think the good way is the potential bad. Like, as you mentioned, I go see these citizens or hear of these citizens that got their feelings hurt. Because we couldn't prevent something. As long as everyone understands, we're going to give this a good try.
Be equipped for public flow. Please, since you, we, we don't really have a resolution crafted for this option, so we'll just do this by directive. Or do it next week. Well, that's two.
Oh, but.
He's going to do it early. Well, yeah, Mobile Bridge.
So I mean, I'll trust staff to come up with, with, with guidelines on this.
Yeah.
You know, when, when it's good, um, you know, so it's not interfere with your ability to set the meeting up, when to cut off time. You know, and we just need to get it out there. Or maybe this is going to be the procedure. Don't hear of anybody wanting to speak or make sure they know.
Can we do that? The next meeting, like Bill said, we haven't passed this yet.
So again, we're not, we're not going to do, we're going to do this by direct. Okay, we're, we're going to, we're going to resolution, I think, going in this direction. Because we're still going to allow the public comment. We're just going to put some more safeguarding to try to prevent abuse of it. Yeah, we can, we can just move forward with that as, as a consensus directive here. Um, and then again, I, I would, I would trust staff to come up with some guidelines on when, you know, when to do every kind of cutoff that registration.
So we'll put that on the web.
Yes, yes, we'll publicize that. For online, will have help, I'm sure. Thanks, Evan. Okay, anything more on that?
It's it, we have resolutions.
Well, yes, a resolution was going to be to just continue public comment. This is really this.
And like I said, then we have the visualization in place. If you know the person that you got, they're amazing. They still do some crappy like that.
Well, we can always, well, right. And, and if anybody can, you know, well. I, in, in the time that I have left in this state, will have a shorter leash on, on that. And, um, you know, if I've got to trap somebody hot with a gavel, I can do that. And then whoever sits in next year, just be, you know. It's your meeting, so. Um, okay, that's good with that. Hopefully you'll wait to settlement discussion.
So, uh, everybody read the entire settlement, sure. Well, I did almost, uh, did not print out the settlements themselves.
Yeah.
Six hundred pages, one piece. I'm sure we'll get plenty of drivers, whatever the house do. So these are two nationwide settlements that have reached, um, against opioid distributors and producer. Our zoo company, Justin Johnson, made the voice. And for us to take advantage of these settlements, uh, we actually have to opt in. The state of Virginia has already opted in as a state for localities to be a part of this. The locality also has to opt in. The state will receive funds from these national settlements, uh, based on how many localities, roughly based on how many localities are opting in. For which is the participants there are. And for us to opt in, that means we have to pass a resolution that joins these national settlements. And has, has another resolution that joins the memo of understanding between us and the state. Which is the state telling us how we will, how they will distribute those funds. And how those funds are being distributed is eliminated. Part of it is unrestricted unless the settlement says otherwise. Uh, part of it has to be abatement and all these straight to localities. A big chunk, fifty-five percent of what goes to the state will go to the opioid abatement fund. And that will be administered by this new Virginia opioid abatement authority. And that authority will take that fifty-five percent and further split it down between localities, regional groups. And just as some backgrounds, in case you thought we were immune to the opioid crisis, Kingway has not been. It's affected. Across the board, everywhere. Um, Sheriff can tell you about what it's done, Sheriff's Department, what they've seen.
Attorney sitting right behind.
And Mr. Pike here, I asked to come in and just go ahead and, uh, enlighten us on the opportunity that this presents.
Well, as Steve mentioned, the impact's been pretty tremendous on law enforcement, on emergency medical services. My office is kind of in the position of cleaning up some of the mess after effects. Um, but we only see, uh, you know, wherever the opposite of the cream and the crop is here because there's millions of people in the nation. Uh, and probably thousands in our local community that don't come in contact with law enforcement, uh, despite their addiction issues. They may come more in contact with fire department or the MS services. But we tend to see people when they're truly at the bottom of the barrel. I mean, the impacts on our offices have been, I was reminded, this is. Been here ten years now, um, as of you and you. I, I can't think of a time in my, time in office that we haven't had an issue with. Opioids and some of the pills for a while. It's always been heroin as it goes up and down. Fentanyl. Which is manufactured overseas. Or Mexico brought into the country and, and that's gotten into. More. It's more insidious than what it's gotten into. It's cocaine at times. There have been reports of it in marijuana. So it's truly a ongoing problem. These are, my understanding, these are funds that are not taxpayer funds. These are essentially civil penalties. That these enormous companies are paying. I can tell you from experience with Communist Turn Association. Ten years ago roughly, ours, our group was, was awarded a portion of another one of these giant settlements. Again, another set. Again, another set of corporations have formed a wall of people's eyes for a long time. Um, and it's a great opportunity to, to address a problem. Our association used it to address ongoing training needs, uh, in perpetuity, we have elements and children training. You know, the options, it's broken down into what you have the opportunity to do, but I, 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 you know, I'm not gonna speak to the sheriff, the police chief, or the fire chief, but I don't see a reason, you know, from our perspective, why we would do this. Uh, there's opportunity for our community, uh, just off the top of my head, to talk about abatement. Talk about treatment, treatment has been, there's a lack of qualified, certified, uh, folks out there to provide treatment that is actually effective, and, and uh, in, at the end of all of it, you know, the treatment only goes so far as the people receiving treatment being on the cheap. Uh, and so, you know, if you all have the opportunity to join whatever this is gonna look like, I would imagine there's gonna be levels of bureaucracy involved, but it certainly would be moving counting to, to take this opportunity, uh, and maybe, uh, you know, address a serious need, and it, it, I mean, just back in this, if we solve, if we solve the opioid problem, whenever, addiction has been around as long as people have been. This is an opportunity to address something that is a true drag in our community, uh, long term, so.
Yeah. I want to thank you for everything you've done. I served on a multi-jurisdictional brand jury for one year. And we were all asked to, you know, to read, I just couldn't do some of the things that I heard. Uh, two members, young people in my district, that overdose. Uh, one individual, they found him with this orange still on his arm. It's, it's pretty heartbreaking, you know, to, to step through that and listen to that. And, you know, that's where it leaves, you know, the pharmaceutical companies, you know, a very large number of the people that we heard, you know, they said that they were using, uh, opioids recreational. And they advanced to heroin, which is now laced with fentanyl. And, uh, it's a sad thing. I was, I was really moved. And I'm sure, well, that's probably been four years ago, and it's only gotten worse.
Well, I, I would say that the, the people that see the brunt of all of that are the sheriff's office. Like I said, my office is essentially a clearinghouse for people. And a legal angle, and, and, you know, we're not sharing any secrets, or we're not gonna arrest and incarcerate our way out of this problem.
No.
You know, we can leverage people, that's, that's my job, is to leverage people into, into, uh, treatment. But there's not a lot of treatment, uh, actual treatment facilities. There's a lot of facilities that help people. There's a lot of facilities that have a heart rate placed, but the work of treatment is pretty significant and has to be done by all of our people. We do not, as a society, nationwide, do not have a great program.
Any other questions? Um, action to be taken tonight?
No action to be taken tonight. I've got a couple of drafts, um, that were put out, uh, by this, uh, state attorney, um, um, which all we have to do is replace our name in there. We're all set to go for how we can resolve to join the settlements and you know, you, and we can do it at the next meeting. So if we get it done before January sixth.
All right, well, I think we're ready to go.
Uh, lastly, uh, under work session matters, we've got the governor's agriculture and forestry industry development. Infrastructure grants for the expansion of processing capabilities for two goat dairies in Kingland County. Alright, so. It was approached by BZ Farm, uh, just down in the district too. And, uh, they let us know that, uh, via locality can apply for this particular grant, uh, which is a match grant for up to twenty-five thousand dollars in the state. Uh, which is used for, um, infrastructure for agricultural orser uses. And, uh, BZ is letting us know because they would happily do all the grant writing and record keeping, everything for these if we would, um, approve to, um, make some match funds towards, uh, this grant, which would help their farm as well as Riverwatch Farm, and since I wrote this, I know, um, they've changed. Um, they've actually got a partner in King Queen as well now. So it'll be helping three different localities, or three different, uh, dairy businesses expand, meet a growing need. And, uh, that are served our, our citizens and economy.
So she mentioned King Queen, and this locality, are, are they going to contribute anything?
They are, um, so when I wrote this memo, they had not gotten a partnership with that farm yet. Um, at this now, um, with the final version of their grant writing, um, they will be total project would be twenty-five thousand dollars to King William. Portion of the match would be five thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars. King Queen would be twenty-three thirty-one. Um, and that, those numbers come down to what capital pieces each farm is actually purchasing. Um, so it's broken down by the farms in King William are purchasing such and such, therefore our match would be nine ninety-four. Whereas King Queen would be, uh, less equipped. Um, we qualify for a two-to-one match. For the project, uh, two-to-one state to locality, uh, based on that we are according to the agricultural people, economically distressed region, and we're serving more than one, uh, business by doing this. What is helping to expand with one business.
Okay, I should probably note this, but what does reimbursable grant, grant?
It means that they spend the money first and then they can report it, they get it. So it's not like the county's on the hook, we don't get a whole bunch of money if then if they didn't use it right, or stuff.
The only problem that I have is, Mr. Chair, I'm like, the there will be other, other farms, other businesses according to the criteria, you know, that may be eligible. So, are we gonna treat everybody in the same? Are we gonna get to a point to where we cannot extend that, uh, that help?
That's what I was concerned about.
Well, it's all about, I mean, certain ones, all about affordability, if somebody brings us something that we can't possibly manage, that we can't possibly match.
So, the criteria is, it's only, it's a max of twenty-five thousand, which I imagine our part would be fifty percent match, so the maximum rate would be twelve thousand five hundred. Correct?
Correct, yeah.
Um. To be fair to everyone.
Well, I think, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just, I just think that, you know, if we do this, then there's someone, it will be other people who this award's gonna get out. That's the only problem that I would have.
In my perspective, thinking, this would be something that we would otherwise budget for. And maybe budget it in the EDA's budget, or the, whatever line that we usually put, EDA. Something there, there about business growth. We didn't know about this fund, or we didn't know about this grant, so we didn't allocate any money to it. So now I'm asking, now, would you allocate this much to it? And if somebody else came up, what would be, maybe it'd be better to say, do one puts twelve thousand five hundred dollars into that, um, as a match? Um, budget item, and if that gets, goes over, then.
Or all of you.
Yeah.
To do an A could grant match a year.
Right.
Comes up, get one.
I think it's on later, okay, I mean, that's just me.
Well, I mean, that, that's fine, I would agree that, I think that this is something we can certainly budget for going forward, and, and if there are opportunities, I mean, I guess, funding agricultural development projects at the county.
Right, the heart of what we can be doing to help.
Okay, two comments, this sounds like a perfect EDA project. And number two is, not everybody can write a grant, how can we, uh, help or assist?
She's got experience. She does, I met with her, um, she works at ECU and, uh, has experienced grant writing, she's already written a grant, I just have to fill the blank for the locality.
They, they, they came prepared, they did not, they, they brought this to us basically as soon enough as opportunity to sign on to. Uh, so, it was I think we were, we were good by the time we got.
I think the age question was also, if someone else comes forward and they are not capable of writing a grant. Where would we go with that?
I think we're gonna have to be able to write something, right? From what I saw was not extensive, a certain fire pressing practices. What are you buying with your money?
Right.
How does it, how does it expand the dollar?
Does the EDA happen to have money this time?
They do not have any budget money to wear something like this. But we had the, yeah, sure. Right?
Can we use it?
Yes, that's the purpose. I would say this is one of the clearest cut uses of that money.
Right.
Again, everything makes a whole us.
What would that consult, so we, listen to this?
Okay. But, oh. She said that the state let them know about it. I would hope that, or, that they love more than just one now, but, um, yeah, we definitely publish this.
But.
Match worthy.
There was no particular agency that was receiving any of their stuff, correct, that were tow out on, and you can't I'm trying to remember.
Right. They sell at Westbury Farmer's Market, I can purchase stuff from them, they sell the.
Okay, so they are in a county at one point, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, they are located, their farms located.
No, I know that, but I'm talking about where it's distributed.
Yeah, they all miss out selling in the county, uh, uh, Riverwatch is literally, I have a walk Riverwatch there.
Was just curious, right, the company doesn't put some of you themselves. I'm sorry, I mean, this is gonna help these counties, while they help put some into it too. I was gonna get a grant, ask for this much money from the county, I would think maybe that they would put half of.
That's, that's.
It's set up for the locality to apply, because it's the locality making the decision that these businesses are worth investing in to expand. And it's.
She just filling out the grant. And you're really gonna sign off, correct, correct the way it's filmed, yeah?
It's sort of like ours a lot, we, the county can get the five thousand, they can get five thousand.
Right, and it's, it's not like we're just, it's not like the money's just going to, that's why they have to show that it's adding the capital purchases that they're making. And it benefits more than one, just their farm, it's not like they're just making more money off of this.
And like I said, they have to show proof, so they may not use it all.
But, right. Right, it's not the reimbursable. Just, we'll use it all, or.
I'll break my usual decorum and make a motion from the chair that we, uh, support, uh, this grant and, uh, the match. Sorry. And he's got, yeah, okay, that's branch. I'll see a resolution, so I'm, I'm. No, it's just a request for a motion.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, yeah.
Request for a mention. I'll do that, yeah, yay.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Warren?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, are there any requests from the board, things that you'd like to see us discuss at the future meeting?
What, what I'd like to see, and I'm sure if you don't know about this, uh, presently, the sheriff's office is only firing the bronze training once a year. They really should be doing it at least two. They could do that from best I can determine, uh, with four thousand dollars. And that we cover the handgun firing and all that. Suppose that even if it isn't this year, you know, for the upcoming vote.
Only if members of the board are invited to.
Yeah.
That's that man's decision.
I did not say. Okay, that's great, what can I?
I had a few things that I'd, um, take care of. So, thank, uh, just to mention out so that the COVID booster shots are available, like I said, now it's most first shots available for kids, uh, twelve, now, so, yeah, but, wanted to let people know is that we were waiting for the county to do it, I guess I should ask Chief Reeves, but, uh, Travis and I've already got, I don't know where Travis is, but, oh, that is. If you want it, if you're sixty-five or older, or you have some sort of medical condition, I know, because, uh, all that crap. You can get it now, and it had no way, so, sign up. And I got the flu shot too, but I was not gonna do it in the same day, so I was gonna get sick like Travis, I didn't mind a week, it's a vote on your sword for just one week. That's all I, that is more.
Mr. Hodges, I had two cents, and you brought me with the situation of Central Garage and the signage going east and west of thirty. Uh, having had tractor trailers parallel me across the intersection, uh, it's now gotten me personally, but there is no, there's one sign turning right, in, in dark or inclement weather, foggy, rainy. I can understand why that place is a mess. And I think VDOT needs to consider putting a left turn sign, a straight through sign, a right turn sign on both sides, east and west. If we could maybe get, uh, a new guy up there.
Yeah.
It's certainly glad, showing the points. But I don't know if anyone else has had any, uh, comments about that, but bus drivers, school bus drivers, bro, you.
Turbling signs. Right, I know what you're talking about, there's only, you gotta change the traffic pattern there, and there's only one sign very close to the intersection to notify you that the right lane now turns right.
But you're not familiar with that area, it can be.
Embarrassingly, I got the wrong. So, um, yeah, I know it's tough, I haven't had anybody, the person directed that, but.
I had a log truck on, so, nothing, the reason you said it was the morning was because they were in the right turn lane, but they had to be in the next to the right turn lane, because it was a log truck was pointing, and they had to do, but the thing is, the light was red. And they came on out as we were coming down three sixty, and took both lanes out going down three sixty east, and they stopped, everybody had to slam on brakes.
I put four separate signs, right, right. Making a whole lot safer, and I know it may be stuff, uh, just remember that Thursday is Veterans Day, please, uh, thank a veteran, if you see one.
Thank you.
Mr. Pike, who else?
Alright.
Alright, I just had a question. Uh, I couldn't help but notice during the, uh, last Tuesday's election, it seems like the vast majority of the localities, towns, they stagger their elections of the key officials, such as the board supervisors. How did we ever get on a schedule where all the members of the board of supervisors would be elected at the same time, local, state, uh, local, state, federal, they, they, they stagger, and it's a reasonable, it's a reason because well, some of us may not run, some, we could equally lose, we could start off with a, with a board. And, and pretty much state, you know, probably government and state, you know, I was just wondering how that happens. Has there ever been anyone?
I can jump in there, Prince George changed there, and what they had to do was draw straws as to who was gonna run short of their, end of their current. And some of those didn't move.
Do y'all agree though, that, that it could, it could be a problem?
It absolutely, well, it could be if, probably if four didn't run.
They don't stagger the house up.
Constitutional.
Well, it's a large, I can tell you, it's a large number of localities and counties.
And, um, you know, I, yes, there's like some institutional knowledge that I value in it, but there's also some disruptive quality to it, and, and moving forward, you know, to the system. The, the way I would see it right now, you know, we're two years away from. The, the way I would see it right now, you know, we're two years away from an election anyways. So the earliest you would be doing it would be in two years practically. I don't know that it's necessarily at this juncture, a, a decision that this board's going to be able to make. That changes.
I'm not sure what. I'm not sure we could add to.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that we could. Again, I, I don't, just, just not even really researching it. I don't think it's a decision that this board can be able to make from this hour, but it's, it's something on the future board could certainly decide to change. We also got redistricting going.
So basically you're saying that it wouldn't be feasible if we did draw a straw or whatever.
You would know because we're all.
Two members in, in the, in the next election.
Well, I can see, we're, we're all elected for your terms. So you can't, you can't extend that term. Okay. You could put it short. That's what I'm, so what I'm saying is.
That's what Bill was talking.
Right. So the election that we would have had to have pulled in order to accomplish that already happened that last week.
That or do one two years after the next.
Which would be an idea. I mean, because they do it for a reason. At some, at some point in time, they must have experienced, they probably able to do that. I just don't know. I, I'm not, I'm not convinced that there's a huge advantage to it. But.
There's been a few places that replaced everybody.
Guaranteed.
No guarantee probably.
I don't know. I mean, it would, it would have, you know.
There's been a few places that replaced everybody. They did survive. I don't know how hard it was, but they did.
That's, that's always possible to do that if something happened and. All the citizens together do not like the outcome of whatever vote it was. But anyway, I, I just noticed that. I thought I had a question.
Well, I don't know how we got here. I, I, as, as long as I've been voting in this county, it's been everybody's up at the same time. So. So I, I could give you a history lesson on that.
I'm just wondering.
I.
It was evidently it's another thing.
Mr. Chair, you're probably not old enough.
Only voted in the county since I was born, but I've been, you know. This is politics and stuff. That's why, how do you think I knew that there were two representatives from West Point started? So, I mean, it's, it's something that can be discussed actually, but I just, again, I'm not convinced that there's another advantage to it to disrupt. A, a term.
Well, a disruption would be if that had.
A two-year midterm election for three, two or three board members would be. Justice politically disruptor, I think. Because everybody would be involved. I mean, it's not like three, however many board members. You know, drew the, the long straw or are going to sit it out. Yeah. We're all political animals, right? Campaigning for people. It's still, it, I, I, you know, I don't think it would bring, certainly would bring peace in the valley. And again, I just don't know that it.
Do we have that?
I think we do, Stu. I think we do. Anyways, I mean, I, look, that's just my opinion. I'm not.
No, I mean, you know. And they do it for a reason. And I, I don't think anybody would want to draw the short straw, but you know, it's, it would be for the county to do it in town.
We can continue that. And maybe the first part of that discussion is to discuss what our real options are. Can we? Force that decision on another board, whether that board consists of the same five members or five different members. This board. Voice that decision upon the next board.
Mr. Chair, I think you have to do it after the next election.
I would think you do, but I don't know. I, I, we've never, we've only ever discussed the, man, how crazy it would be if all five members lost at one time. It's never actually.
Did it at the two-year long.
That's what we'd have to do. Yes. You'd have to have two or three more members.
Planned it out before that, but I mean, that's when you elect.
Right, right. So maybe we can talk to them a few about.
I don't think you could force a struggle method anyway, because that's not legal. You'd have to have somebody volunteer.
This, 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 this.
What's? I, I was just wondering how we got to where we are.
Legal or not, that's how they did.
You want to volunteer, give up two years.
I think that, I think that all four agreed to do that. I think all four agreed.
Well, that would be all right.
Yeah.
Two of us can resign right now.
Everybody. Mr. Chair, I don't make a lot.
Yes, sir.
Can close. Good job.
Mr. Haggins?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hold on, hold on. I'll give you a personal point of privilege.
I'm just worried about, you just mentioned the district thing. When do we need volunteers for that committee?
ASAP.
Okay. Is that being advertised? That's what it says in the.
Yes, I believe it. This guy posted.
We need to be, we need to be there to get that going.
I'm working on that.
For redistricting?
Yes, we need a redistricting committee as well.
And before, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump back in. Where can we, where can we find those? Such for each district?
It is then on the, I'll send you a link.
Okay.
Send it to all.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's it.
As there's no discussion allowed, there are any motions to.
I thought we were saying.
We hadn't even called the robe.
Mr. Garber? Mr. Warren?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Scott?
Hi.